Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be letting the pledge by Mr. James Evans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'd like to welcome everyone to this, I guess probably the last work session for this school year, I guess. And Thursday, the last board meeting we'll have. And before I turn it over to Mr. Odom, I would just like to say, give some congratulations to Mr. Blair and Mr. Holliday on their reelections, Mr. Nickers' appointment to the county commission. I'd like to say congratulations on that. And then we have Mr. Jim Estes out here, our new board members. I'd just say congratulations to each one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Anybody have any questions on the agenda? How about consent agenda? All right, Mr. Odom.
And I think Mr. Murray is coming Thursday night. First one is Mr. Tackett up with the cheerleader coach. You've heard the presentation last time, so we can probably kind of let him get to it and see what he's found out since the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. I did meet the next day with Julie Webb, who is now Julie Aiken, the athletic director of Oxford Middle School. She's the one that brought to my attention the restrictions that we discussed with middle schools from the AAACA guidelines that were there. So she came by the office the next day, we sat down and went into a couple places and lo and behold, we find that every association that we're, that deal with cheerleaders, we could find, all work with AAACA and those guidelines and restrictions that are there. So further investigation finds out that TWSSA requires those guidelines to be in place as well for middle school and high school. So the guidelines are already there, they're already in our handbook. I gave you a copy of the handbook that's there, those are in place already. The only action the board will need to consider is whether we go on with certification. Certification is not required, but we did discuss that we feel like that that should be something that we would recommend that that be done. We're asking that the board fund the first time, it's a two-year, I believe, situation when they are registered, we're asking the board to pay for that for two cheerleader sponsors per school and then allow, then the school will take those on after that period of time. There are those, these most recent AAACA cheer safety rules are in your hands, they already are distributed to athletic directors of schools and per direction from me, principals, athletic directors, and all cheerleader sponsors should already have those in place and they should be following those. I think certification just simply brings us more credence to what takes place and I think that there is some liability protection that's also built into that. So that would be the recommendation that we make on that. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to respond.
Not so much a question, but a comment. The fellow's name, Jim Lord, Jim Lord, who's the executive director of the AAACA. He keeps a Google notification on his computer that anytime AAACA is mentioned out there, he gets a notification about it. Well, it showed up in the D and J today and so he got a notification about it and he ended up calling me. He offered because of this startup that we're proposing, that he himself would come over from their national offices, which happened to be in Memphis, and would be happy to come over and do the certification class to as many who might want to do it in a in-person kind of format. The online course, you know, certainly offers flexibility and that opportunity.
Sure.
But he did make that offer and it may or may not be something we want to take advantage of.
I'd be glad to give him a call and see if we might set that up. I think if we can make that opportunity available to our coaches, I think anytime you can do it in person as opposed to online, it would be a better opportunity so we can, I guess, I appreciate you letting that be known.
The other thing that he expressed to me was the enforcement of the AAACA guidelines and their three-strike policy that is part of the training that they explain to anyone who gets certified. The general public is the enforcement. If you see something that you feel like is unsafe or something like that, you can go to the AAACA website and report it to them. They then conduct an investigation and will monitor that and speak to their certified instructor. They have a three-strike policy, they've never gone beyond the first strike. So their track record is excellent and they are very diligent about using that.
Something suggested in my mind that the board would also be in line with that very thing, that we may not need to go past the first strike with that. But you're exactly right, I mean, that's where your general public will be the enforcement agent and make those reports and do that. So again, thank you for that information. Any other questions?
I do. Knowing from my daughter's experience, these middle school children that are being tossed up in the air and all of that, what liability do we have if one of them falls on their head or on their neck and breaks it? I mean...
I think with any liability situation, and Ms. McLeod can speak to it further if I misspeak at all, if you're doing the right thing with the right people in place and the right equipment in place and all those kinds of things, and it truly becomes an accident based upon everything was done right, it's an accident and I think that we're protective of that. When you're not doing what you're supposed to, when a restricted toss in this thing is done, then liability falls clearly upon the person who is egregious in that situation, like to me, like driving my car. If I do the right things and an accident occurs through no fault of my own because I'm doing the right thing, I hope I'm okay with that. But when I do something outside of the law or outside of those regulations, then I put myself in jeopardy.
Well, I mean, you know, based on experience and based on what I see every year, I do not think middle school children have the strength and the condition to be tossing others up in the air and trying to catch them. And that's based on what my daughter approved too. I see even in college, tosses go wrong where kids fall on their neck and break their neck and paralyzed. And basically, what I'm trying to say, it's a very dangerous sport. I feel and I know what we're doing here, the recommended approval is to approve the county cheerleading guidelines and safety procedures, which to me means that we have the, in this motion here, we have the ability to say that middle school shouldn't be tossing at all. And that is what I'm saying.
You as a board have the ability to do anything that you choose to do.
Right.
We can go into lots of things. Football, we understand, is a dangerous sport.
It is.
People are going to get hurt.
It is.
There are guidelines there, we have heat index in place to recognize that, but even if we probably heat index procedures, is it possible that someone could have an episode with that?
Correct.
So to me, it's just, these are guidelines that are not foolproof, it doesn't guarantee that nothing can happen. It's just simply these are battle-tested, according to what's going on. This is a national group, 50 states have bought into it and thousands and thousands.
Right.
And so...
But, and say during the football, the football players are conditioned, even my eight-year-old friend, Gretza, is going through conditioning now to be on the football team. But I'm saying that still, that he came in the other day with a big bruise, that being the sight, I'm saying these kids at that young of age, elementary and junior, I feel are not conditioned, they're not, they do not have the strength to be tossing a kid 10, 15 feet up in the air trying to catch them. That's just my...
And again, you as a board have the ability to do whatever. If I'm a cheerleader sponsor and I don't feel comfortable with that happening and I don't feel like that I'm properly trained, that I don't have the proper people in place, then they wouldn't be doing that with me either.
Correct.
And that's the point that hopefully is being made here, is that they need to be following guidelines that they clearly feel comfortable with. So the...
Will these guidelines resolve or absolve the school board and the county from any lawsuit?
I'm not the legal man, that's Ms. McLeod. Or...
Joe, these are just guidelines, they do not result, they do not give us immunity from lawsuits should we do something wrong. These are simply guidelines.
Should the coach do something wrong, we're still responsible?
Should a coach do something negligent, then the Board of Education could be held liable, yes.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, I didn't mean to ignore your question.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll just add, because the middle school topic was part of the newspaper article and Jim Lord offered to me, he said, "You're not going to have to worry about that because basket tosses," and that is one terminology for one specific move, and it is not something that says anything more than basket tosses. And that's something we have to be careful about. Mr. Jernigan made the point, you know, when we get into these things, we start talking about micromanaging from the board level and that's really not what we want to do. And, but specifically basket tosses are not allowed at the middle school level under AAACA guidelines. In addition to that, the UCA and the NCA, which are the sponsoring bodies of all accredited competitions, don't allow those in middle school. And so there's no reason for our middle school teams to feel like that they're being left out or restricted in any way to lose or be restricted from the ability to do a basket toss. But that still doesn't mean that they won't be, you know, on shoulder stands or various other things that may put them at some level in the air. What we really find here is, in the legal setting, Rutherford County, what have you done? Well, we've done exactly what nationally across this activity has been understood and accepted as the standard for training and accreditation. And that's what we're doing. And that is our defense of, you know, what have we done to be well-educated, well-informed, and due diligence of caution? And that's what we're putting in place. That's not an ironclad defense by any means, but it is certainly a step in the right direction.
This whole issue to me just sort of expresses again that the large number of activities that are involved, I mean, who would have thought we'd be talking about cheerleader activities, you know? But there are so many activities and there's such a huge responsibility that the administration has, the principals, the administrative staff, as they go through just doing their job every day. So it's just, again, it just opens our eyes to, you know, all the things that we must look at and form some guidelines on.
I personally think as a society, because of all the news agencies we now have, the Facebooks, that we have the ability to look under every rock practically, we have some idea and understanding that we can protect everybody from everything. And that's just not part of the way life operates. I mean, I'm going to be struggling in a few years when my granddaughter gets in that car for the first time. I'll never forget the feeling of when my daughter got in the car to drive to school as a 16-year-old. And I was her driver ed teacher and I felt comfortable, she knew what she was doing. But even though she had the right training, I felt like and had the right mind disposition, I was scared to death. And I would be the same way, I think if I had a cheerleader being tossed up in the air, I think I would struggle with that. I would struggle with that if I had a football player. But I think we recognize that life doesn't come with any foolproof guarantees, like what Mr. Holliday said it, is that we are taking on a standard that is accepted nationally. And by certifying, I think you're going a step beyond what is required by TWSSA to do. And I think we've done, by doing that, we've done as much as we can do. That's the recommendation that I have.
And I think this gives a level of protection for our children, but also the other level of protection is parental involvement, like you just mentioned. If it looks dangerous for my child, I'm not going to allow it. So hopefully between these guidelines and parental involvement, everybody will...
And I think what we've done is raised a level of awareness, not only for our parents, but also for our cheerleader sponsors, because I have an idea that over the past year, cheerleader sponsors have been maybe pressured through whatever kind of thing to do, to go above and beyond what they really felt that they should be able to do. And so by raising this level of awareness, hopefully we're going to have those cheerleader sponsors in a position that they can say, "This is as far as we feel like we can go."
I've got a question, Mr. Tackett, on certification for two coaches up for two years. Why are you looking at two years?
Well, as far as the payment?
Well, I don't know...
No, the certification will last for two years, that's just the way it operates.
Okay, it lasts two years, but you're going to...
Yeah. So you don't, a coach that gets certified this year would not have to be recertified until 2017.
Okay, so once they get certified, we're going to pay for it the first go around in school?
That's great.
Okay, that was my question. Secondly, I think it's, what my interest has been on this is certification, just knowing that they're all certified, that's the biggest thing with me.
It's one thing to put these copies out there and say that they're supposed to follow them. The second thing, one thing to me, when they're certified, they have indicated at least they've gone through the training and to do it in person would be far better if we could get that done.
Well, if everybody's good with this, I'm going to let, ask Mr. Odom, Phil Reed, the recommendation and all that, and just for the general public to know what's included in everything.
Cheerleader, coach, sponsor certification. At the request of board member Mr. Holliday, the Rutherford County Schools guidelines and safety procedures have been reviewed. Rutherford County Schools athletic director, Tim Tackett, met with a representative group of current cheerleader coaches on both the middle and high school levels. A follow-up meeting was held with Mr. Odom, Mr. Sandvik, and Ms. McLeod. The following recommendations are the results of those meetings. All cheerleader coaches sponsored will be AAACA certified by October 15, 2014. Request that the school board pay the $75 certification fee for up to two coaches for the next two years. Each certification is valid for a two-year period. After that time period, the costs will be incurred by the individual schools. The AAACA cheer safety rule shall be distributed to every cheerleader, coach, sponsor, principal, assistant principal, and athletic director at each school to advance enforcement. All cheerleader coaches and sponsors shall follow the TWSSA rule pertaining to online rules meeting available in the fall, typically in September. The immediate environment for all activities shall be taken into consideration prior to the performance of any skill during practice, games, competitions, or other performances. If a suitable and safe location is unavailable for tumbling, partner stunts, pyramid jumps, et cetera, then activities must be ground bound. All cheerleader coaches sponsored shall follow Tennessee law in regards to concussion, including signed documents as required. When tryouts are completed and the squad has been selected, all cheerleaders will be given the opportunity to participate in the impact baseline testing program provided by Rutherford County Schools. And the recommended approval, the motion will be to approve the Rutherford County Schools cheerleader guidelines and safety procedures as presented.
Let me add one point. The handbook which I passed out shows edited, I think 728, on page eight you see the cheerleader guidelines that are there. It's already posted there. Those were re-edited on the next day to take that number one out, the certification, until we got that straightened out. So that will be re-added once you pass this on Thursday night. And then we will put this handbook online for all of our coaches and parents and anyone that would like to see what's taking place.
Mr. Tackett, I do have one other question. Will we be reviewing all sports and making sure that we have the proper certifications for all sports such as rugby, maybe even ROTC? I don't know what other things are out there.
Rugby would not, because that is not a school-sponsored activity, so that's outside of our, but we have guidelines in place. If you look, there's something there on page eight, excuse me, I'd have to look at page number four or five with coaches. But there are places there to go through all the certifications required in the National Federation of High School testing that has to be done and certifications for coaches and so forth. So yes, we're doing that for every coach. And athletic directors at each school are responsible for keeping a chart indicating that all the coaches have gone through the concussion training, their non-faculty volunteer trainings that have to take place. So all that information is in place.
Thanks, Mr. Tackett. B.
B is the 2014-15 Rutherford County Schools strategic plan. At a specially called meeting on August 5, 2014, Director of Schools Don Odom and staff members presented a proposed 2014-15 strategic plan for Rutherford County Schools. After much discussion and suggested changes, the board requested the revised plan be on the next school board meeting in general potential adoption. The motion will be to approve the revised 2014-15 Rutherford County Schools strategic plan as presented. Let me point out the changes and things that we adopted since the last one. And you have a copy that Mr. Evans has prepared for you there. So we made several changes based upon your suggestion. One of the first ones was under the priority area for instruction. And that was, I think, the goal one, meet or exceed annual measurable objectives. That was a change that we put there. That would be, of course, state AM, what we call AMO and that sort of thing. So that changed there. I totally removed the behavior screening. I think we need to get a little more clarification from the state. The state, see, I think their intention here is to look at learning styles as much as anything, the visual and all. But this was, this is part of a thing that they're going to put in the RTI somewhere down the line, but I don't want this to become a lightning rod for the whole point right now. And so it's not something that's got to be in place at this moment and we'll get better clarification from the state and then we'll follow up of kind of what we can do or need to do following that. So we just removed the reference, just took it totally out, because that could be an issue of misinterpretation till we get better guidelines. Right after, right after that, the other one on the first goal, the spreadsheet, we added this spreadsheet, and this is based on our discussion too. One of the things we're talking about down the road, four and five years, remember, we talked about this plan maybe five years out? We're not going to do all those things at once, we can't, and some might not get done in the fifth year. But we did do some estimating for you. So as we take a look at that, like number one in this, we did discuss this one the other night, but we are doing the response to intervention with the interventionists and the coaches in all K through eight. And that's what's implemented this year. State required at least K through five, we implemented K through eight. So if we move this on to high school, we have, right now, they're saying for high schools up to two years for implementation. This will be our first year, we had pilot last year, if you know, 13 schools in elementary and middle. So we'll be doing more than a pilot this year because you've got all schools in K through eight. So will the model for elementary, middle be the same for the high school? If it is, you're going to be looking at the same coach and intervention people. If you do, the cost is roughly $960,000. So that gives us something to think about, but that's not in next year's budget likely unless we can, we see something happen or we see how it works. The other are some positions down through the years that instruction has talked about in there. Most school systems with over 40,000 students, us being the fifth largest, have additional specialists that we do not necessarily have. And so we haven't done that over the years. I mean, we've got really a specialist for the K two, so Pritchard, which does that. We've cut out a specialist for math, one person, math, science together. Science is going to take on a bigger role, the state's working on standards and all of that now. We have already got people for career and technical education, but you don't really have anybody much for social studies, but reading and those pieces are bigger. And so as we look at this over the years, if we have people and bring it to you in budget form that you'd have to look at and see if we want to take it forward, these are likely the positions we're talking about. We did add to that, Mr. Holliday, the fine arts position. And I think probably with Rutherford County starting out, it probably won't just be music because I think it would probably be fine arts.
Oh, yeah.
Because right now, other than your secondary coordinator and your middle school coordinator, no one's doing that particular area, it just kind of falls under that large umbrella. So certainly as we grow and get larger, these are positions that already exist in most places as we look at it. So this gives you an idea of what could come sometime in the future. So we thought that would be good to give you that as part of the strategic plan. The other thing I think in there, and you can look at the instruction piece with the RTI and that's where the whole behavior thing is meant, is eliminated from that. So what was on your original version is no longer in that one at all. Going a little bit further into this, going back to, we added Mr. Curtis, which we handed you by, last time we realized we had left out, it was a sheet, it's now included in this, it's bound into it. So it's over there under the technology piece. This was the one for teacher computer replacements, student computer replacements, if you remember that server projector replacement. This was a sheet that was separate last time that's in there. So that one's, what you saw last time has just been placed in there, not changes any, but that's just the same thing you saw last time. So that's not new to you, it's just in this band. Mr. Evans, after listening to you last time and some of the discussion, thought it would be good to add another area, so, and he discussed it with us, so we decided to add that. And that's under stakeholder involvement and engagement. So he's added one additional thing, if you, that page at the bottom of the goal four. There is a new bullet. That's about, I don't know, about three pages back from the end of that. The last bullet, increase opportunities for volunteers to engage in school, especially those from the private business sector. So we need to make this intentional, rather than just talking about, maybe we begin to look at this as intentional. The Business Education Partnership of the Chamber of Commerce has a program called Spark. And some of those speakers from the public visited our schools last year. The one that you may recall, it was listed in the day's journal, probably got the most attention, were the two engineers, two retired engineers that came from Nissan over and basically stayed about all day and worked with almost all the students at Smithe Middle. Very popular, went over very well, students enjoyed it. The two engineers retired at the end of the day, but they enjoyed it. So that is up and running and they're talking about that again this year, adding additional people from the community to do that. So that really needs to be a part of our plan that from our standpoint, the others that we begin to expand that. And that shows up in the spreadsheet, there's not really a cost necessary to that at this point, we see that's on the last page of your plan here. That would be the number two under stakeholder involved, that would be a new one. So basically, your change from what you saw last time is taking out that whole behavioral survey or assessment piece, taking that totally out, adding in from instruction additional personnel that down the road, somewhere we're probably as Rutherford County Schools going to have to look at and dealing with that, especially the RTI for high schools and the stakeholder piece that Mr. Evans has added. That's primarily the three changes that were included, right, Mr. Evans? I think that's, that's basically it for my discussion. Have you had anything else that you're interested in since then or caught your attention, I guess?
Not since then, but in your conversation and discussion just now and the presentation of this, I know that Mr. Evans does an outstanding job, but if we were to accomplish all four of these goals, they are goals that are largely coordination of the community and such, but if we were to accomplish them, it would not be with only James Evans's efforts. And there would be the need for an additional staff member at least in his community relations department. And I hate to mess up, you know, the presentation that you have here, but I think as we mentioned, other staff members in other areas of this, I think we perhaps should reflect here in this, in this priority area, stakeholder involvement and engagement, the reality that if we were... the reality that if we were to accomplish these goals, there would be a additional staff member that would, that would allow us to do so. Could we be, could we include that before Thursday?
If you want to add that, if the board would like to add that. I'll tell you what we're doing now for Spark. Ann McCraw is kind of being our flow-through person, which does the in-service and training, teachers contact. She is serving as the distribution point when we get lists of people who are willing to come and speak. She's serving now in that to send it out. This'll be the first full year that the BEP will try to implement that. So how far along, how quickly, I don't know, but there may be some things we wanna do ourselves. As Mr. Evans said last time, if you really look at the community relations department, with Clarkson, had five, is that what you said last time when I asked you?
Yes, Clarkson had one.
Had five staff members involved in that program.
It's not always apples and apples, they have, each, each department's a little different, but Clarkson, I believe, they do have five.
And they have a unique situation in Clarkson with Fort Campbell. Might take up some of that positioning. I just wonder if there's potential, as you go along through this, to discover other needs. So I don't know that we need to change it in that sense. We just need to be aware and prepared that if, as it presents itself, other options are gonna come up. I mean, this is a plan. It's not set in stone, it's, it's, you know, things will change. Funding will change.
Mr. Nipper's going apples.
But, well, local funding, we, we don't have any concern with that now. But state funding, we'll just ask you to move on, Mr. Nipper, to even bigger things.
Everybody good with what we got?
Any other questions or anything that you have, I certainly, Mr. Trump?
I'm sorry, Mr. Trump?
Well, I, I don't have a question, but the plan, we just kind of have a statement. You know, when we was talking about stakeholders, talking about parents, basically. And where do those parents have most of the contact?
With the school.
And anything that is developed here at the central office has to be sold to the people in the schools to make that a success with the stakeholders. Now, I, I think it's a possibility, but we have to be careful that there's not so much coming from this office to those schools. They cannot do a good job in dealing with it and buying into those programs. Where the detailed work is, is where most of the time has to be spent. And there, those people at the school level have to see that program being, being fit to them and their students. Or I, I don't think it'll go anywhere, whatever we, we'll call it. You know, it's just got to be sold to those folks and, and help given to them to implement.
Anybody else?
Mr. Trump just put his principal hat back on, which I do sometimes too, when you see that.
All right, number nine.
Number nine is under financial matters. The first one, a general purpose school fund balance update, information only. Mr. Sandy is gonna, I'll read this, and he's gonna talk to you a little bit about it. And one other piece that I sent you an email on earlier, Mr. Sandy, if you'll step up. General purpose school fund balance update. The GPS unassigned fund balances of July one, two thousand fourteen was fifteen million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, or four point nine five percent of our approved three hundred and six million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget. We had to use eleven million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty of our fund balance to fund the two thousand fourteen, fifteen GPS budget. The state minimum fund balance requirement is three percent. We are one point nine five percent, or five million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars over the minimum requirement. However, we need to plan on using most, if not all of this, five million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars in order to fund next year's GPS budget, since we have been reliant on fund balance to help fully fund our GPS budget. Of course, the idea here is to pay down that we're, we're dipping fund balance to make it balanced, is to try not doing as much as that, which is the problem in Washington, of course. Two thousand thirteen, fourteen revenues are two hundred and ninety-five million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars, which is five million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty more in revenues than our original budget. Four million, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars was in various local revenues, with one million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine in sales tax, and one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten in various property taxes. And one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand of increase was state growth BEP funds. The two thousand thirteen, fourteen expenditures, and this is after we closed it out, because it takes a while to close it, were two hundred and ninety-four million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, and eighty-two dollars, or two point eight percent less than the amended budget. Mr. Sandy, would you step up just a minute? Because I sent you something the other night too about something we were hearing that the committees were gonna work on. And he can take your questions to this and give you an update on where that stands also.
The commission, Budget Committee last week, and the commission this Thursday, will be voting to rescind the initial property tax resolution and pass one that is one cent lower because we had gotten a certified rate that was used in preparing the budget. After we met on that Friday, we got a lower certified rate from the state. So basically, unless they go through having a public hearing and all, we have to drop to that lower certified rate. It will cost us about eight hundred thousand, was Lisa's estimate that night, because you also get into the mix between the frozen properties for senior citizens and the non-frozen. So her estimate, it would be more eight hundred thousand to us. And at this point, where the proposal at Budget Committee was just to wait on doing anything with changing budgeted revenues, assuming that growth in the course of the year will take care of that. But this will, of course, put us shorter for next year by about another eight hundred thousand short.
Any way to make it up?
Shift pennies to us. We, we should cover, be covered with growth during the course of the year.
It basically means with one, if the property tax rate drops a cent, then what would have been unappropriated possible at the end of the year will be that amount less. So it's gonna lessen probably your end of fund balance, even if you have growth from the, from the initial value.
Is it worth about half a million?
It's a, something over half a million, I'd have to look up the exact amount, I never call.
It is a little over half a million.
Yes, for, for us, and higher than that would count.
It seemed like it was under that for.
I know, it, it, the last couple of years, it's been over half a million for us. But one, one thing that I was very pleased to see is that our revenues came in for last year a million and a quarter higher than our actual expenditures. So in these years where we've been having to rely on deficit funding, I believe every one of them, our actual revenues have come in slightly higher than our actual expenditures, which is the only reason we've been able to sustain it at all.
So we actually paid some of that deficit back, if you're sure?
A little bit, until this happened.
Anybody else? All right, B.
B is Capital Projects Fund one seventy-seven, Amendment for Ongoing Projects. Each year, all outstanding purchase orders in the Capital Projects Fund are liquidated on July one, and the unexpendited amounts for these ongoing projects revert to fund balance. This amendment effectively sets up the unexpendited funds that were on these closed purchase orders as of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and allows the engineering department to complete those projects. This year's amendment covers four unfinished projects for a total of four hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. They are the Eagleville Sewer at two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred dollars, the Blackman Roof at a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars, Riverdale and Oakland Gym seating at twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, and Blackman Elementary Chiller at ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Recommend approval, motion to amend four hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars from committed for capital projects in order to complete the two thousand thirteen, fourteen projects as presented.
Any questions? All right, C.
C is School Activity Funds, Accounts Payable and Receivable. Each year, the school board must approve the accounts payable and receivable for each of the school activity funds that had outstanding amounts payable, is five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, or accounts receivable, seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents at the end of the fiscal year. These are all routine school business transactions that relate to the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. They could not be closed out by June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen because additional documentation was needed before a bill was paid or the school was waiting on a payment. Recommend approval, motion to approve two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen accounts payable in the amount of five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, and accounts receivable in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents for various school activity funds as presented.
Carter?
Let me make sure I understand this correctly. This is the same type of thing that we just did with the capital projects, we're just closing the books and where the money closed out, and then we go over here, we create a new spot and put the money right back.
Right, there's a, there's a, if you carry over funds, even the county commission has to get involved, I think, under state law. But if you, this in essence does that, what you have, a project's not completed exactly by June thirtieth, so, but it's still not through, but, but.
I understand it in capital projects, the school activity funds, I don't remember seeing this before, but I'm sure it probably was there, and I just don't recall it at the moment.
You'll give them an example or something, that might, that might be an example that helps clear it morning thing, so let's do something like that.
I brought up last year's and copied it and changed the amount. So, yeah, we did, we do send it every year, that's a requirement. What this does, it lets us say, if the central office owes a school money for something, it's usually the other way around. But that way, once, as you approve them, then we can show it on the school's book as money that wasn't accounts receivable. We would show the revenue, and we'd show an accounts receivable, once you've approved it, or an accounts payable. But what usually happens on the liability side is they have received something they have ordered, but they have not been able to pay for it because they are waiting on some documentation. And kind of vice versa on the accounts receivable. They, they are owed the money, but the check hasn't come in yet. And most of these items have probably cleared by the end of August.
Anybody else?
This is a new item, fingerprint clerk salary schedule change. Wofford County employs two part-time fingerprint clerks to manage our fingerprint office. And that's over there in the building next to us, you know, it's the same as the adult ed building. This is a partnership between Morpho Trust and Wofford County Schools. Wofford County Schools has paid two dollars for every print completed, which covers the cost of the two part-time salaries. We currently pay the two clerks minimum wage, seven twenty-five an hour. But because of the large workflow through this office, our incoming revenue is more than our salary expenditures. We actually do fingerprint checks for other businesses in town and all like that. We are the site, city schools, we're the site that does that. So the company does reimburse us. But here's the, the issue we found. The motion to increase the salary to level one on the classified salary schedule, or ten forty-two an hour, to ensure a more stable workforce for that office. What we're finding out is people don't wanna stay for seven twenty-five, they're looking for something else. So we actually, when we looked at it, we're paying them less than we are intra-cafeteria workers and all to do it. So this, this is your really level one, classified, bottom tier. It brings these people up to what we've been doing in the cafeteria for starting people, level one and all. It just brings them up to that same level. So it's an adjustment in that is what we're asking to do.
Fairly sophisticated process too. It's not as simple as you might think. They must get so many good prints out of the each hand in order to move forward. And that can be difficult, I went through and experienced it two years back with C school. So they did a lot of work.
One of the reasons we volunteered to take it is because tonight, you're, or Thursday night, you're gonna be approving all these volunteer coaches. Well, we gotta do screening for them, you know, you got all of your teachers you have to screen for. It surely has been convenient for it to be here. Because we probably do as much of that as anybody in the county, and make probably more than most. So if we can get a stable workforce, although where you're not training all the time, and people kind of learn, it, it's certainly better for us. The whole community, you're providing a service really for businesses, another thing in the whole community is what you're doing here too.
Are you making it consistent with it being a level one with other classified or boys?
It's not a cost to taxpayers.
We should, basically, in most years, it should cover. Said, he said it's not a cost of the taxpayer because most years, it covers it with the numbering.
You call it part-time, how many hours they spend working?
How many hours do they work?
They work four hours a day. They split the shift from eight to twelve, and twelve to four. Eight to twelve, lunch from twelve to twelve-thirty, and then twelve-thirty to four-thirty.
So they're, they're split hours, okay. Had a full-time position, but it's two people.
They book up beyond one day. I mean, we even literally have some situations where a teacher, we wanna get him in the classroom or something that you're trying to do, and you're ready to employ him, that we may refer to, we can look online and see, is there an open slot in Lebanon? Or, or in Nashville, or in Shelbyville, or something like that? So I know our HR department looks at this, and they do over there, and say, if you wanna get it a day earlier, because they can't start until they go through this background check. So we refer like that, and they do some of the same for us too. But we're just a larger county than some of the other two that I've mentioned there. And so sometimes we take two or three days to go it off.
All right, number left. Let me, let me just say, Ms. Moore, glad to have you tonight. I offer congratulations to all the candidates that won election and earlier. You came in a little later, just wanna say welcome to you too. Any general comments, discussion?
If you do not, I've got two or three things that I've put in your packet that I would like to mention. Just, this is kind of information for you. We are sending out a, and this one's not in there, but the others will be, we're sending out a school messenger. What we're, we're still in the process with all the new students to change. The biggest thing being the new software change, where of course STAR was no longer supported, so everything has to be wove for the new software. That's basically been done. Our most difficult situation right now, if transportation has a bus late or something like that, all of the bus numbers and all the matches are not there. It's probably gonna take us about two weeks before that, all that alignment works out. And so Mr. Schnell's office has been trying to do as much as they can by telephone, but our parents have gotten really, really accustomed to, bus gonna be late, there's gonna be a school messenger coming home for your bus. So what we're saying to you is, right now, we can't do that very well. We leave out people because all of those pieces gotta get together. And it's difficult at the start of the year, but it's most difficult this year because of the software piece being added to it too. So it's not that, we're not moving that way as quickly as we can, it's just with over forty thousand students, it's huge. So, it's not that, we're not moving that way as quickly as we can, it's just with over 40,000 students, it's huge.
With the STAR program, we had such an issue with time and now, we're losing information. But this new program is, is more.
We're not that friendly. We're not having those issues. It's much more user-friendly. It's more Windows or, uh, Windows-based, where you don't have to click, you don't have to key as much in. Uh, it's much more versatile. It's just, once again, when we shifted many years ago from the Horizon software to STAR, we had some growing pains there. But STAR was much better than Horizon, which was the old DOS program. It ran on just strictly DOS. You had to key everything in, had to have different codes to make that happen. And we're making that kind of shift again from STAR to this new SDI Now program. It's much better, but it's kind of like going from a BlackBerry to an iPhone, or an iPhone to a BlackBerry. You have to learn a few things, but yes.
This is internet-based, so you're actually up another level. Um, and I think I read in some of the email, some of the talk that's been going on, the states decided to put us on a separate server again.
Right.
And they tried us sometime with the others, because the state hosted, and I think they discovered it. Rutherford County probably needs a, a server to them, so they're moving towards that also. We've had small breaks this week of a few minutes at a time, the state would notify or something. It'd be down for a few minutes, there's an issue, but it's come right back up, you know, relatively quickly.
And that was the issue we were dealing with, was they were putting us on the same server with many of the other smaller school systems, but the size of Rutherford County is, was causing that server to crash for five, 10, 15 minutes at a time. So, this weekend, they're going to migrate us to our own dedicated server. But we haven't been down more than just a few minutes at a time.
Um, another piece of information, I'm going to ask Mr. Clardy to step up. We're taking some moves with energy conservation, and, um, you might get a telephone call from somebody. So, he's just going to tell you what, what we're doing in that, so kind of give them a quick update of what's happening there.
In a lot of our schools, of course, we can control the temperatures in many areas of the building from a computer over here. So, um, I brought some standards, I don't have them with me tonight, before the board at one time, when we were discussing this early on. And, uh, part of that discussion was setting temperatures. In the summertime, we're setting them on 72 for the class runs, or in the warm part of the year. In the cooler part of the year, we're setting them at 70. Well, uh, this is actually the first year that we're, started doing this, and I'm getting a little pushback from different people. They're wanting to bring fans in. Um, I'm sure this winter, it'll be heaters, uh, and it's only two degrees. We get complaints, we go out and check the room, it'll be 72, you know, uh, for this time of year. So, I'd appreciate if all of you would support us in our, you know, the policy that was adopted, uh, by the board, so that we can save some money. We've made, uh, strides in the savings. As you recall, we didn't have to increase our budget this year for utilities, and we hope that we are getting to the point where we'll start saving more money as we go along. Jeff Stacy is doing an excellent job of running that. Of course, he's, you know, uh, getting plenty of feedback from schools that he's having to deal with. And we expected that to happen, we knew it's going to happen. But, um, if you get any calls on that, just please support us if you can. If it's a serious problem, we'd be glad to look at it, but otherwise, we would like to follow the policy that the board has set for.
When a group of students walks in or something like that, uh, if it's been 72, it might pop to 74 or so before the air gets to that thermometer sitting on the wall and starts making the adjustments. So, if you get some call, they're burning up in there, I mean, if, if, if the unit is down, we have mechanical problem, we address that quickly. But unless you say otherwise, we're looking at the 70 and 72 to try to be consistent. And, and we do not have this in a lot of schools. Uh, because if you look at strategic planning, and that's one of the things Mr. Clardy was asking for, if we're going to really save money over the long haul, you've got to be able to address it more. Mr. Yulwich, you were talking about the other day, so this, this is, you just need to be aware of it, that we're in the process of doing this.
And I do have the list of, uh, digital controls that we talked about, and I'm not sure that, uh, it's comprehensive at this point. I know it is digitally, but there may be some, uh, mechanical equipment, odds and ends, like valves and different things that would need to be added. So, I'm trying to get my hands around that right now and figure out exactly what that is, so I can have a very accurate cost for you when I bring it to you. And another one of the issues is that we have some, uh, teachers that are coming into some of the schools on Sunday afternoons and working for a while. So, Mr. Odoma and Jeff and Ken Curley were discussing this today, and, uh, we're going to turn the heat or coolers on for a certain period in the afternoon for them, and maybe, you know, turn it on at 4 and turn it off again at 5, so, uh, they can get their work done. So, you might hear from that also, I'm not sure. And, uh, I know, I've got one more small thing, and that is that the extra, uh, the, when we rent schools to different people, for instance, churches to hold services, uh, that money goes directly to the school. And they also, I think, pay the custodians for cleaning those up. But there's no consideration in those for any utility use. And if you get two or 300 people in an auditorium, it's very energy-consuming to cool those things and heat them. Uh, and, uh, many times, that turns into an all-day thing, uh, if they have two services or whatever. So, just be aware of that, that that's actually costing us quite a bit of money doing those things. I think it's more beneficial to the schools, although the money's going out the window on the other side, even though they're taking a little in. So, at some point, it may be better off for us to just give them us, allow us every year, let them put it in their bank, and do something different. Uh, it probably saves us a lot of money in that direction also. And I'm just throwing that out because I had the opportunity to do it.
Carter?
When we do the offset temperature, is there a standard that we're setting back to? If our standard is 72 when we're unoccupied, what's our unoccupied temperature?
The unoccupied temperature will be, uh, it'll go up four degrees, maybe.
Okay.
And that saves a lot of money over the millions of square feet that we have.
Are there concerns that your department has about having, uh, additional fans, or in the wintertime, additional heaters? Are we going to overload circuitry and such, or is it, uh, the heaters in particular, you know, are they a, a safety hazard? What are we running against?
It's several different things, it's all of those. One, uh, of the main things is that it consumes more energy. The other, uh, thing is that those small heaters have a very, they draw a lot of energy. So, the circuitry, for instance, if you bring in a microwave and a heater and put it on the same circuit with some of the other stuff, there's a constant issue of kicking breakers. And then, many times, you go in and those appliances are not hooked up to cords, extension cords, because there's not an outlet in the area. They may run a 20-foot extension cord around, and it could be a size 18 when you need a number 12. So, uh, that's also a fire hazard, that's an i- issue with the state. Fire marshal, they come in and they, uh, don't like it, they give us a write-up on that. And, uh, it, it's just a lot of issues. The only, for instance, uh, re- small refrigerators that I have been approving are perhaps when a nursing mother is pumping or something, so she can store the, uh, her milk for babies to take home later or whatever. So, uh, other than that, the microwaves, the heaters, the fans and refrigerator, we try to discourage those. And there's some of them sneaking through and getting by, but, uh, anytime we have any, any input into it, we discourage it.
What else?
I have placed a three little sheets in your packet also, Tennessee Teacher Salary. I am a member again this year of the Tennessee BEP Basic Education Program Review Committee. Uh, we had an online session today, we actually meet many times at PSBA. Uh, most of the report today was, there was a, a service that, uh, the state went out to ask this Appalachian Regional Laboratory Group that did a national study, and it's a multi-page presentation. I picked two or three out, that I thought would be interesting for you. Um, there was a draft copy today, it'll go to the government or legislature later on in the year. But the big thing today was teacher salaries. So, the, the first sheet there, um, according to the salary last year, Tennessee ranks 40th in the nation in terms of average salary teachers, and 40th in the nation in terms of growth in teacher salary since 2003 and '04. So, um, that kind of gives you an idea of where we rank, this is FYI to you. Um, the second sheet there is just some surveys about why teachers leave, or what affects that, or what impacts that. Um, again, and there's, there's many other special studies in that, but it's, the last sheet, um, which is an interesting one to me, that studies are showing that when you increase teacher salaries by 10%, it really only results in a .7% increase in university graduates to go to a career in teaching. So, it's still very difficult to recruit people into the world of teaching. And I think the statistic shows us that. But if I get more information, or, um, you want to see the whole report, you're welcome to, it's, it's a very lengthy report. Um, the other little, uh, piece that we'll try to, by Thursday night, I think we'll be able to maybe give you a school-by-school count a little bit. Um, kindergarten, um, half came today, the other half comes tomorrow. So, that council, being, will help us a little bit, get some of the numbers as we phase those in. Mr. Evans, we've been talking about him tonight, he becomes one of our parents tomorrow morning with his first, so, uh, he'll be a part of that, too. Thursday night, I think we'll do a better breakdown, but I, I think the growth this year is going to be more reasonable than the number I have. I'll probably choose in the, the new city school, and that, that's helping us with some numbers. Maybe we can get out of some portables and some other things that we've been doing this year, that certainly may help.
Carter?
I just can't let this slide by. I look at this survey, and for teachers who left the profession, 61% says poor salaries was probably the cause. It's, and, um, you know, it's been my observation over the years that a lot of people leave the profession and stay gone for a while, and then, all of a sudden, they show up with an active application again. Are we still finding that true? And I know the economic times have improved, and that, it varies, but, uh, what are we, what are we seeing now in Rutherford County?
Well, I can't give you a specific percentage, but we do have job candidates who leave us for whatever reason and, and come back to us. Uh, I don't know, again, the number, what we do is see candidates that return to us over a period of time.
Yeah. And how many active, we hired, what, 380?
This summer, we're, we're at around 350, 60 so far.
Yeah. And, uh, we have how many active applications?
Active applicants, probably 8,000 in our database.
Okay.
And again, we don't know how many of those are currently seeking, but they do get reminders through our system that if you want to continue to have your application updated, you must log in and do so, so we just interact with you.
So, so that's telling me that Rutherford County must be a pretty good place to work for teachers. And I, they, for whatever reason, the grass is greener, they leave, and a lot of them want to come back. And I, I have observed that over the years, and, um, surveys like this is for the state of Tennessee. When you start isolating Rutherford County, I, I think we'll see a lot different, uh, survey, uh, numbers. And when we look at the new hires and the number of teachers we have, that's probably about eight out of every 100 actual teachers that left their positions. Is that, I, I just did that in my head. Is that pretty close?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. That's kind of what I thought.
One of the things that's, that is sp- spurring this, and one of the things that we ran through a little bit this year, um, another part of the report, which I didn't put some pages, because it's so lengthy, is that a lot of schools across the state, and us also, are having trouble getting people for specific courses, for instance. Math, last year it relaxed, and now we're short again. Not much math, so there's other pieces of this where we're paying an incentive. We actually pay an incentive also, if you remember, as part of our plan. So, part of this study deals with how much incentive's being paid and what it takes. One of the most interesting things about it, Mr. Jurnigan, was, uh, they talked about what, what, what does it take to get a teacher to relocate? If you, if you're a strong teacher and you wanted to relocate to the lowest performing school, if you were trying to do an incentive. Or one of the people today on the telephone, they asked, if we wanted to get, entice somebody from Ohio to come down to Tennessee, they asked these people, what does it take, what, what money is there a lot of time? And that figure's close to $10,000. And, and so, teachers, unless there's a really substantial change, um, small amounts are making almost no difference whatsoever. People teach for different reasons other than just the dollar figures that you're down to.
They do, and, and that's, and that's the reason we have to be careful about using surveys for, uh, a lot of, a lot of things, because it's how those surveys are conducted, when they're conducted, and circumstances surrounding them. So, I'm, I'm proud of our teachers in Rutherford County, and I am extremely pleased that our system is such that we have teachers from other systems. And I, I know it's time for us to go, but I know of a teacher that was Teacher of the Year, Teacher of the Year in another system, she applied for a job in this, this system. She did not get the job that she wanted, so she didn't come. But then I know of a Teacher of the Year in our school in this county that applied in another county, and she got a job just like that. So, I, I think that says a lot for our group of folks and, uh, in our system.
Anyone else? All right, there's nothing else for our journey, and see everyone on Thursday.